Go ahead and call this meeting to order. First order of business is housekeeping. If you wish to speak to an item before the commission tonight, if you please fill out a white card and give it to the clerks so we know that where you're gonna, you're gonna be speaking to an item. If you'd please, let's see, we're gonna start with the roll call.
Thank you. Chair Wilson.
Here.
Co-Chair Kerth.
Here.
Vice Chair Kerth, sorry. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, if you would please join us in an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to serve and not to be served. Remind us daily of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in time of need. Amen.
Thank you, may be seated. Our first order of business tonight is approval of minutes from our August 12, 2015 meeting.
If there, I'm sorry, if there are no corrections or additions, I move for approval.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. We have a first by Commissioner Porter, a second by Vice Chair Kerth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those minutes are approved.
All right, we had a request to move Agenda Item Number One to later in the program, so we'll go ahead and do that, and we will start with Agenda Item Number Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda Item Number Two is attentive parcel map, case number PLN 15-00026. It's to allow for the creation of two separate parcels from one existing parcel. This site is located within an R1 zone. Typically, the zone would allow 7,200 square foot, I'm sorry, 7,200, yeah, 7,100 square foot lots. The applicant has worked with staff to increase the size of the lots in this proposal due to lots in this area being, ranging from half acre to one-half acre. So the applicant has proposed a parcel map that reflects the community. The frontage of these lots will reflect the one-acre parcels in the immediate community. There is no easements of record traversing the property, and staff supports the proposal as conditioned.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and open up public comment for Agenda Item Number Two, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item. Being none, I'll go ahead and close the public comments and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman Wilson, I move to adopt Planet Commission Resolution Number P-15-041, approving case number PLN 15-00026, and find the project category exempt under Section 15315, entitled Minor Land Division of the State Guidelines to Implement the California Environment Quality Act.
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Chair Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item Number Three is PLN 15-22. It is coming back before the commission because the applicant, or the appellant now, is, has provided some additional information with regard to the massage business. Clients she has, letters of references, certificates of completion regarding training and schooling that she has obtained for massage technician purposes. And with that additional information, staff believes that the council would prefer that the commission hear this new information and make a determination on whether that would change your opinion and vote on the last denial. So with that, staff would recommend opening the hearing up to the applicant or appellant for her to speak and then proceed with a decision after that.
Very good. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for Agenda Item Number Three. I have three cards. I'll just take them in order that I have them. First is Jenny Farrell.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you for letting me talk to you again. I didn't realize the importance, and I was doing a treatment with my husband at that time, and had I known what the importance was to make sure you had the information you needed, I would have been here.
Thank you. Okay. Your first thing that you had a concern with was safety. And safety is something that I, that's a big concern for me because I really take pride in taking care of my clients. I do have an alarm system in my front home and as well as in the back. I did have it updated and added three cameras to cross the front of the property, down the drive where they would go, and then all the parking that they have in the back. So there's ample parking for them back there. And I only have one client at a time, not a barrage of people, other than if there's a couple that comes, a husband and wife, then they'll switch out, that kind of thing. I screen all my clients. My clients come from professionals and word-of-mouth referrals. My clients that I have are outstanding citizens, and so they seem me the same type of people because they know what I'm looking for. One of the main reasons that we're trying to do this is because I have, we have two homes, my husband and I. We're trying to get down to one and then to just one location for the business because he needs me. They're basically at all times because of medical reasons. And so being clear out in Apple Valley and then trying to get back home to the home, it would take too much time to get there in time. I feel like every, every case should be judged one-on-one, just like you're doing with me. And if they have the background, the knowledge, the backing, the type of clients that I have, I think that by the time you dissect something, you're gonna be able to see what you really do have or what you don't. And so I think an individual, just like what you're doing with me, and if it merits, then that would be a good thing. If it doesn't, well, then they just haven't met the criteria as far as whatever you need. If there's something different than what I know about, I would like to know, and so that I could see what I could do to accomplish whatever that is.
Your main, your business currently is located in Apple Valley?
For nine years at that location, but I've been at, I've taught at three schools. So one of them, I was at a school for a number of, and I taught the bodywork portion of the treatments.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to this issue. As you know, as relates to your industry, for the city of Victorville, it's considered problematic. Despite of all the things that you've said, what is not in question is your character. It's definitely, it's not in question. As relates to your training, it's commendable. I've read all your certification, so I'm satisfied with that. And as relates to safety, an issue I brought up, you have made some changes to facilitate safety, so I'm in favor of that. What I am most impressed with is the fact that there is strong support in alleviating you of your stress as relates to taking care of your husband and providing for him. I am now in favor of doing that. It's brought to my attention that we have a number of home businesses in the city that I was not aware of before. Now, so that I have no objections to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
No, but I have a, I have a comment. I, I think that her letters of recommendation are quality letters of recommendation, and I think it's, she's also got this additional thing where she has to take care of her husband at home. And I think that would prevent us from setting a precedent. That was my main concern was because, like he said, it, we have considered those problematic. That doesn't mean you. It means had other problems in the past. So I'm, I'm impressed with your, you doing your homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next card I have is Glory Bayer.
While she's coming up, staff would like to point out that on the memo that was submitted to the commission tonight, there is a revised resolution number if you were to choose to motion for that approval. It's 15-034, not 38.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Glory Bayer, and I'm a resident of Apple Valley and a client and a longtime friend of Jeanie's. I'm here to represent her character, which is, she's in the top percentile of all of my friends. I know you've done your homework, you've read the letters, you, you know what she undertakes. But she's that kind of person that, well, there's very few of them, but they give, they're givers. And she's so qualified. I've been going to her for so many years, and she's helped me out physically, emotionally, spiritually. And so I'm here on a Thursday night that's very busy for me because it's that important that you understand that this lady is top quality. And if you allow this in your community, your community will be blessed. So that's all I have to say unless you'd like to ask me some questions.
Thank you. And the last card I have is Steve Richard.
Good evening, Steve Richard. I'm the architect for Jeanie. I'd like to thank this council and just note that I appreciate the issues that you face on behalf of the city. I'd like to commend staff for working with us and Jeanie and really going the extra mile to arrange this second visit. And I'm just here to thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number Three? Being none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Yes, I have some comments. I, I still am opposed to this type of business in a home market payment permit. But, which I don't change my, my thoughts very often after 25 years in the Planet Commission, but all the letters of recommendation, which we have lots of them, which, thank you. And Jeanie is a caregiver of her husband. I would have two conditions if it, if you would abide by them. If the, Jenny Farrell would be the owner and operator only, and Monday through Friday, nine to four, closed holidays. You'd agree on them, I would be, I would support this. Said yes, shaking her head yes.
Okay.
But I, again, I would, would, would like to not to have this be a precedent. I hope we can...
I'm in agreement.
So I, if any other question?
Questions?
I'll move for the, the two conditions and move for Resolution Number P-15-034.
Second.
Yes, with the revised, yeah.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Porter, with the addition of those two conditions being only Jeanie as the business owner and the change in hours of operation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been approved.
Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Four.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda Item Number Four is case number PLN 15-00028. It's an appeal of the Director of Development's decision to deny building permit number MIS 15 00175. This permit would have allowed for a three-foot fence with four-foot pillars in the front yard of a single-family residence. This is in violation of the current enforcement of Municipal Code Section 16-3.08020, Title 16. This fence is what's called an as-built fence, so it was built without a permit. So the appellant came to City Hall to obtain a permit for this fence, which, as noted, is prohibited by code. The Municipal Code states that decorative garden walls, fences, railings, pilasters, and retaining walls that are not intended to enclose the front yard area are allowed. Staff has interpreted this since its inception this year to mean that front yards enclosed by fences of any type are prohibited. This, a little background on this code, it began and was part of the Single Family Design Guidelines that were approved by the City Council in February of 2015 of this year as ordinance 2318. Part of the reasoning for this and why the fences, the fence enclosure was included was in an effort to reduce the perception of crime in an area, reduce the assortment of fencing that you'll see typically that lacks in continuity and design potential for animals that could be kept in a front yard with fencing that encloses the front yard, like a guard dog or something of that nature, and the potential for allowing storage in the front yard of a home, which would be prohibited by code. Since this code was approved by the City Council and enforced and in conjunction with the proactive code enforcement that the city is now doing, staff has seen an uptick and kinda has created a firestorm, so to speak, of these types of issues with the proactive code enforcement going to every home in the city through, in sections. They have found a lot of fences that were built without permits. So staff is seeking some direction in regards to our enforcement and our interpretation of the code as written. Like I said, staff typically, since this was added to code, has interpreted it to mean that any fence, regardless of being a view fence or otherwise, will be prohibited. And there is some arguments that can be made for a view fence that would still allow security to the street, would still prohibit potentially storage because people can see it and would allow code enforcement to see storage. So some of the concerns may go away if, if the commission finds that a view fence would be acceptable. So that being said, staff would recommend opening the public hearing and taking public testimony and the appellant testimony on the, on the appeal, and then choosing either Option A, which would recommend a code amendment or a policy for staff to move forward and change our interpretation of the code to allow view fences, or Option B, which is, which would uphold the permit denial and maintain our current enforcement interpretation of the code as it's written to prohibit the enclosure of any new fence. We also have notifications that have been returned from a property owner that said it looks fine and attractive from neighboring property owners who were noticed on the project.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for Agenda Item Number Four. I have one card, Mr. Donald Yaw.
Good evening. My name is Donald Yaw. My fiancee, Ms. Linda Price, is here present with me. We purchased our house March 17th. We came from being a Victorville resident on King Canyon. We liked the neighborhood. We have always had dreams of getting a house with a picket fence, whether it's white or beige or tan. In this case, we thought we'd find something that was very decorative and appealing, not just for us, pride of ownership. When we had the one permitted garage sale, a lot of people were very favorable to it. We had told them some of the problems we had with the city and its wisdom and wanting to have it pulled out. After, we initially looked hard and long not to get into HOAs or, or other places to where we couldn't have the opportunity of having a fence. And the purpose of this is, one, we have animals. Two, we have kids coming around. We'd like to have a safety. We're also seniors, and this is something, we hope this would be our last home. But if this goes in the direction as the director and staff want, then we're gonna have to consider the possibility of putting it up for sale and move out and go to a city, county, or state where it's more amenable to where it's not a dictatorship because it is very clear, see-through. There are no walls, no solid vinyl brick or wood or anything of that nature. And I don't know, it just, it's something that looks beautiful to me and my fiancee. And we just would appreciate your consideration in letting us keep it. As per the recommendations, I talked to Alex earlier, and I noticed there is two amendments there. A would be a possible option. We would also still like to ask if that is the possibility to, if we need to move back the fence, the front part of it for the easement, we would be amenable to that. We prefer not to because it's already in the ground. It would take, we'd have to cut up, lose, and get a couple more posts and put it back in, but we would do it. We just wanna try to be happy Victorville neighbors. And that's basically what we're trying to apply to you for.
Question, when you're talking about an easement, which area are you talking about?
The very front of the fence, directly behind the mailbox. There's supposed to be a 10-foot clearance that we didn't know about when we purchased the property, being that there's electrical, cable, telephone in the ground. It's supposed to be clear of anything, which we didn't know until after we put it up. So we would have to move it back four feet, probably one post in, as you can see on both sides of the picture. Pick out one full link on both sides and then moving it back would put it to code. But we're just basically hoping because we put our last $8,000 from a sell from one house to this house. And it's funny, we as seniors don't have. And we're just pleading to, to your court.
Can I ask a question of staff? Is that what is what he's...
The easement is actually encroachment. I believe he's referencing encroachment into the public right-ofway. Currently, engineering does not allow encroachment permits. Under certain circumstances, they do. One of the findings in Option A, if you, if the commission chooses that, one of the findings included in the resolution is that potential for engineering to consider, reconsider their stance on encroachment permits should a fence not create a safety hazard or a sight distance issue. And Brian might be able to speak to that more than me in terms of what they allow, but, but that's what he's referencing.
Is there a way to determine that and then...
Typically, for new construction, we don't prefer a fence or a wall to be in the public right-ofway because I, I think what some people don't understand is where the right-ofway line is and where their property line is. They may think it's actually at the back of the sidewalk, whereas most of the time, it extends further behind the sidewalk. In this case, I believe the sidewalk is six feet wide. And so the right-ofway line, their property line, is actually four feet behind the sidewalk. But sometimes there'll be utilities in there. Could be cable, telephone, electrical, and so forth. A lot of times, the property owner doesn't know that, and they might put a fence in, in that area.
Didn't know that.
Our preference would be that it's not in that area for new construction. But we can get into a discussion about the pros and cons of that, and I'm open to hearing any, you know, anything in this, in this matter about that.
Would it be determined as to what type of utility may be underneath there? As to the possibility of agreeing to, agreeing to an easement or saying, no, you're fine?
Well, I mean, it, I mean, one scenario is, let's say that ultimately, there's a decision where, say, if we allow the fence to be in the right-ofway and we did issue an encroachment permit, it's possible that if some utility had to get in there in the future, they might have to move the fence just so they could access the utility if they had to do some kind of maintenance. Now, I have to tell you, there are a lot of fences and walls that, where this has happened in the city where they have encroached into the right-ofway. It's not, we don't like it, it's not our preference, but it has happened in other locations.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Is that prevalent or is that prevalent just on occasion?
Development, they may know better than I would because code enforcement has identified some of these. I, I don't really have any statistics. I don't know the numbers. I just know that there are a number of them in the city.
And then, I guess, the next question I would have is if, say, for instance, SCE had to go out to do some work, the financial responsibility then fall on the homeowner for replacement of the fence?
I don't know. That might be a matter between SCE and the homeowner. I don't know how they would work that out.
Okay.
But if we did issue an encroachment permit, then they would actually have the right to have the fence in the right-ofway. So I don't know how SCE would handle that with the property owner. I'm not sure.
Okay, just using it as an example, whether it's water, cable, phone, whatever.
Okay.
Did you get a permit for the front yard fence?
Uh, no, I didn't. At the time we came in, we were told by both the escrow and the realtor, Berkshire Hathaway and Julian Ojeda, that we didn't need one in the front yard. We didn't know that respectfully. And in regards to the front area, we would be most amenable to moving it back. We don't want it to be a cost to, or inconvenience politically or otherwise. But we just want our, our safety and to be able to live out our, our years. No, we didn't get a permit initially. I do have a permits for the sides that I have added on to the back fence that I did put on. And all of those have been up to code. I'm just hoping that we can maybe amend this to maybe pull it inward like they suggest, and we'd be amenable to that.
You would have known about the encroachment then if you had gotten a permit.
No, ma'am. I honestly, see, I'm from, I'm personally from LA.
If you had gotten a permit, you would have known about the encroachment because they would have told you where you could put the fence.
No, but we didn't get a permit for the front, so yes, ma'am, I know we would have known that, but we didn't. That's what I'm saying. Had we gotten a permit or gone in for one, we would have known that and we wouldn't have put it in front like it is at the present time. We honestly didn't know that. And what do they say? Ignorance is no excuse. No, it's not. But we're just hoping and praying that, you know, we put a lot of money into this and that altogether, it costs us 16... we're just hoping and praying that, you know, we put a lot of money into this and that altogether it costs us $16,000 for both front and back to put up in between me and my fiancee and our senior elder years and our dogs and our kids coming by. Uh, we just want to have a little bit of privacy and a little part of, of, of community that we'd like to be part of as long as it's amenable to work with us in some way more than where, where it is. And I'm very sorry that we didn't get in for a permit to find out that it wasn't acceptable at the time. Had we known that we couldn't have done that, we would have pulled our plan in four feet and wouldn't be in that part of the violation. But I just wanted to put that forth if I might.
I, I do, I have a question. Um, in our, um, staff report?
Yes.
Um, staff, um, gave us a little case history and a timeline. And it says that, um, that you, the, the appellant had originally obtained a building permit for a rear yard fencing at this house?
Correct.
Is that true?
And we were told after I met with, uh, your director, Mr. Chris Alec and, and guy, uh, from code enforcement, when we had a meeting here in the office, that they could add on the side ones. And then there was the issue of, as to the up and down spike of the, uh, scalloped, uh, part of it. Cause that questionably was possibly too high, but it's still within.
Yeah, I saw that in the timeline where, where it looked like you kind of negotiated and they said, well, you can come down the sides, but not enclose it in.
Right.
But, but if you say you don't, you didn't know that fences needed permits, yet you went and got.
That was after, sir.
Permit for the backyard, right?
Well, the back one, we, we went and got, okay, look, we have, we have, there's also should have been pictures in there, what the fence looked like in the backyard of wooden dogwood fence. If not, I have some here, but basically they were torn down, dilapidated, sunbroken dogwood fences. We have dogs. There's dogs on two sides of us. And they're very big and, and, and very alarming to our little Chihuahua or, or Pomeranian. And it's just not right for them or for us to have to endure, you know, this. So we put up a vinyl inside of the other existing fence, which now we understand is now a common fence because it, it, it enters in on three properties, left and right side and the rear of us. But what we're doing is to try to just make it more private and, and user-friendly and.
I understand. And what I was getting at is, I just want to see in the staff report here, it said that you originally came in for a building permit for a vinyl fence in the rear yard and at, and that was May of, of this year. And at that time you were informed that front yard fence was prohibited. Was that untrue? Did the city not tell you that? At that very time?
That was afterwards. The fence was already in. We were only at that time informed that we, we had to have a permit for the back, which we did.
You did the front fence first and then went to get a permit for the back.
We did both, sir. We did them at the same time. The only thing is, is they, they told us we had to do one for the back, even though it's inside the property line. They said it doesn't matter. You still need a permit for it. So we said, okay, let's get a permit. So we got one that's the inside of the.
Happened at the same time.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we don't have a problem with the permit, front, back, side, whatever. We want to comply with any and all regulations and rules and codes, but you know, we also want to have a little bit of privacy. There's been, uh, first three weeks we were there, we had 15, 16 solicitors coming by door to door, either for alarm companies or, or cable companies or, or church groups or kids, uh, going through the yard and stuff like that. And the other thing is people let their dogs loose and they defecate on, on our front yard. So the fence not only is aesthetic and, and peaceful and serene for us, it, it looks good for the neighborhood and it, it's similar to one exactly the same on the opposite side of the street in the, in the presentation that they, that I gave staff and staff has. So all I'm asking is for an equal fair share. These are 1991 homes. These aren't track, I know they're track homes, but they're not HOA or Melrose. So we're just trying to do whatever is within a reasonable direction and I'm hoping that you might possibly work with us. And, and we have no problem in moving the fence directly back to comply with, uh, an easement if, uh, we would be blessed with that direction.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I, I'll make a comment when you bring it back to the board.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number four? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comments. Back to the commission. Commissioner Do?
Yeah, I got some questions. I, back in January nine, we approved an ordinance 2318, whereas January ninth workshop, the council identified three out of six priorities goals that directly relate to residential developments specifically. A safer community, higher value residential and a prettier, cleaner community with pride of ownership and improved streets. In addition, it is the council's objective to implement higher neighborhood design and development standards as a means to support the three-year goal. Then you picked a committee of two council member and two planning commissioners to go over some of these things, I thought. I talked with Rob Kurt today and I guess nothing really come out of that as far as fences and, you know, things like that. I, I'm, I'm really concerned about some of these things that whose opinion that a fence looks bad? Whose opinion that some of these things won't work? Uh, you know, to me, a fence outside, then we wanted to build houses where we live in the front and have porches. Wouldn't a porch and a fence be ideal on the front? I, I, I don't follow some of the things that we're trying to do. I don't have a problem with a fence. I think a, a fence put upright and looks nice. It protects children. It protects an animal. Uh, you don't see the, the bad yard unless you're really looking for it. I'm really concerned about some of the things that we're doing here. If we're going the right direction with all this, I don't know. I, I, I'm real concerned. But we don't, we got lots of fences out there. Are we going to start tearing these all down? Or are we going to have more discussion on this? Or what are we going to do? Um, I'm reading the ordinance and we haven't went as far as we should with that. And that ordinance with the planning commission, the city council, the, uh, BIA was there and some of the public was there. That's where it should start. I think some of that stuff should be talked about and really not brought before us when there's a problem.
Commissioner Do?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am in, in favor of anyone who's, uh, out to protect their livelihood or their well-being. And with, uh, seeing the six o'clock news with home invasions, uh, when people take steps to put up a fence, and it was brought to my attention, um, that it could be up to four feet with a curvature, uh, that would be acceptable. Is that, that what you brought to my attention, correct? Okay. And so, um, it seems to me I'd be willing to, uh, be in favor of option A. Cause I think it's the right thing to do. And also I want to convince, uh, the petitioner, this is, uh, democracy and not a dictatorship.
Yeah, I think, um, sometimes when you have a committee and you make recommendations, that's where sometimes the unintended consequences come out of an action and then it allows for discussion and maybe a clarification that would allow for that unintended consequence of what we're actually trying to achieve. And I think this is an example of where that may have fallen, maybe not so much in between the cracks, but it brought it to light. Yep. No, I, I, I took a drive down North Star and, uh, counted up multiple different types of fences and, and things. So I can appreciate that. Um, were there any other comments in regards to this?
I still have a concern that he didn't get a building permit, I mean, get a building permit for this and that, uh, and encroaching on that, uh, on the right-of-way. He's lucky that they didn't, um, break, um, SCE line or, or a gas line, which could have been really catastrophic.
Agreed.
Uh, and with all the utilities that could be in there. I, 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 I have no objection to that size of a fence. I do have objections to, um, the fact that he didn't get a permit and he's in that encroaching, uh, into the, um, the right-of-way.
Yeah, I, um, I have those same concerns too. Um, and so I think, uh, I think we can deal appropriately with just this one case, but for me it's bigger to, um, to say, how are we going to, um, justify this, make a precedent and moving forward with not only just the existing homes that are in Victorville that may or may want to, you know, put fences up randomly through there and it may or may not look right. Okay. And there's a permit. There, there was a permit process for that, but since, um, earlier this year, the new ordinance says that all residential homes will not have fencing in the front, have the front yard fenced in.
We weren't present at that time.
And, um, the public hearing's been closed.
We were not present.
Yeah. Future precedent, um, the way I looked at the new ordinance was that we spent a lot of time with design guidelines for the new homes of Victorville, the new feel, the new upgraded elements, the style and feel of the neighborhoods and how they're going to look. And, um, part of that trend was that and a lot of these newer type feelings of neighborhoods, it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't look right. It might not look right. To have just a one home here with a fence and then it's, it's open and then one home here with a fence and then this guy's got this style of fence. You know, and so I think that's where it kind of came from, Chris, from historically from looking at other cities and the way developments are going nowadays. That doesn't mean I would be in favor of anyone taking out of their existing fence on existing homes in Victorville. But I think the question to the commission that's even bigger than the, the one property before us right now might be, how do we handle allowing this, but not allowing it? If we were to allow it, the only comments I could come up that I could even justify was does that one house that has a three to four foot fence surrounding just the front yard portion of it, does it add to or support the architecture of the house and the property? And does it add to and support to the architecture of the neighborhood in general? And those, I think those are the questions we have to try to ask to figure out allowing or not allowing front yard fence.
So in general, these types of items, if somebody wanted to come and put up a fence, it would go before front desk and then they would?
Correct.
And their determination on, uh, the example, somebody came by and said, I'm going to put a chain link fence in, absolutely not, doesn't fit code.
Well, chain link, chain link fences are prohibited in, in tract development already, that material wise.
Exactly, but as, as an example, then you guys would be able to look at that and go, no. Somebody that would do something similar to this with a vinyl scalloped look, you would then be able to make the determination, yes, that there's, because I look at visibility of being able to, one, see inside the yard, definitely not trying to hide anything behind it. Putting up a six-foot, you know, wood fence that would block off the complete front yard. That to me would be completely unacceptable in regards to a front yard fencing. But doing something that allows that visibility, but yet still provides some level of sense of security, maybe it's a little more acceptable. I'll go ahead and reopen, reopen public comment.
I'm sorry. I just want to say, uh, first of all, no, I wasn't able to get a permit because I didn't know that we had to have one. I am sorry I didn't, but I didn't know about any ordinance as Rob was bringing up at the time that we moved over here. So we were told by our real estate broker agent that we didn't have to get a permit and it was okay to go ahead and put it inside the property as long as it is not on the sidewalk and nothing to close off the driveway. We did as per what we thought was recommendation. Otherwise, we were looking for homes that already had existing fences up so that we didn't have to have the headache that we now have. We would have been happy with that as well. But since there wasn't one there and what we saw in the first few weeks we were there, we just felt very uncomfortable and, and insecure with, you know, people riding bikes, skateboards and dogs defecating and, and solicitors. And we tried to come up with something that would be pleasant to look at both for us as well as the community. And we had a garage sale. We talked to neighbors all around. They love it. They, they, they can't see what would be a problem. The only thing I told them was maybe, you know, we blew it by going over, uh, the encroachment area of where the, the lines are, which I honestly did not know. Okay. I'm willing to pull it back if, 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 if we can try to come partially on, on project A.
A word of future reference?
Yes, sir.
Don't always believe what a real estate agent tells you.
Well, okay. I, I, I see that now. I'm, I'm, obviously they're not getting my business again regardless of what's happening, but, uh, I, you know, was hoping that they were looking out for our best interests.
Right. I understand that.
And obviously that was one of our key points in buying a home with fence or one we could put up. That was what our criteria was and a mailbox in front.
All right. I'm going to close public comment.
And you know, everything that we've been talking about has the ordinance of 2318 back in January, that's for new homes. Now we're, we're talking about a, a tract that's 1991. Should there be a distant, a different criteria for some of the older homes and the looks as a new home? I don't know.
That's part of the difficulty is they're in the same zone district. It's R1 zoning. So when you change a standard in R1, it applies to everybody. So trying to come up with a a way to delineate any new tract house built from today on, from 2015 on, you know, will apply to these standards. It, I mean, we can certainly look into ways to do it. Sure.
Maybe we should have, um, something to the effect that they would bring in plans to you for, for their approval for any kind of a, of a fence like this that goes in the front yard so that you don't have this problem again. I think that if we had some criteria where at least we had some leeway because the fence looks nice. It's not, it's not, I, I don't think it should be in the right-of-way, but I think that it looks nice. Um.
Everyone is supposed to come in and.
Yes, well, um,
At least show us a plan again.
You've got some bad advice.
One, even, even if it didn't require a permit, they should be coming in with a plan, just as you noted, to stay out of the encroachment, to stay out of the right-of-way.
Exactly.
Well, Chris, is that something, and you know, I don't know which way the commission's going, but to maybe get to a resolution here, is that some kind of happy medium for going, going forward on new housing development that should somebody want to fence a portion of their front yard? Um, could we put some pretty strict standards on it if they did? Because I'm hearing reasoning from the commission and the applicant, there, there are pretty good reasons that they, when he said the solicitor's coming 15 times a day, I hear you, man. I want, I think I want a fence too, you know? It's, it's just how it is sometimes. So in those cases going forward, is there, you know, say there's some, some higher end, more, more newer homes that, you know, maybe it's a kind of, um, you know, block, uh, decorative block pillars with some decorative wrought iron that could do the trick? That kind of matches that style of that specific house or neighborhood. Is that something that staff could?
We can work on that.
Cause personally I think, I think th- this is, this is okay with me, but it definitely has to be moved back. That's my opinion because number one, it's, it's, it shouldn't be there. There's a reason for that. And number two, you know, kids ride bikes down that, that sidewalk and it's not very wide and handlebars hit the fences and stuff. So it's got to be back. Um, and then mo- moving forward, maybe just to try to suggested language to tighten up the ordinance.
I, I was going to suggest that, that Mr. Yaw come in and, um, uh, present just the way it's going to be so, and, and get a building permit. And, um, and then, and then let's bring this back at, at, uh, for any kind of adjustments to our code for recommendation to the council, of course.
Well, it sounds like what I'm hearing is on existing homes, we're fine with view fences such as this in this manner. But on, we, we can look at new construction with new, the new design guidelines and going forward with their, and possibly a se- a separate approach.
Yeah, you're, uh, you, it's almost impossible because in your neighborhood, you're going to, in one neighborhood, you're going to have, if you had one lot that wasn't built, you know?
Oh, no, it would be for new tr- new tracks, not for infill development. Yeah.
I think it's, I think that's the way I feel about it.
That's kind of the way it's, it's written that now, but you, we're adding the part about separating the new, new construction from existing development.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, I'll make a motion to, um, I guess this would be, um, find that this project first is cat- categorically exempt under SEQA. Um, and adopt resolution P dash one five dash zero four two, which is modifying or reversing the director of development's decision to deny the front yard fence, uh, permit MIS 15 dash zero zero one seven five. Based upon the planning commission's clarification, what constitutes enclosed yard and the fact that the fences allow visibility, um, restrict surveillance or create safety concerns, therefore, uh, maintaining the municipal, municipal codes conformance with the goals of the strategic plan session. conformance with the goals of the strategic plan session. And also, part of this would be that the applicant must bring plans in for this fence for staff to review, to make sure that the fronting portion of the fence is placed not on the city setback area.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Kerth, a second by Commissioner Porter. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that has been approved with the conditions that plans be submitted to planning, to show where you're going to move it back, so it's not in the setback area, and that's how it goes.
All right, I'm going to move back over to Agenda Item Number One, it's Eric Taylor here. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start Agenda Item Number One now.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Agenda Item Number One is Case Number PLN 15-00023. It's a conditional use permit and a site plan to allow for the construction of a clubhouse within an existing homeowners, for an existing homeowners association, the Cypress Point Homeowners Association. The subject site is currently, will kind of be considered a pocket park, it's across the street from a larger park that has a lot of amenities, like a playground and things like that. The subject site now is just a turf area, and it does include like a block wall and a sign for the entry to the community. This proposal will put another amenity on that site, will put a clubhouse on the site and allow the HOA to have their meetings onsite instead of offsite. Also, it'll prevent them from being exposed to any inclement weather, that might be an issue when they have had them at the park in the past. The proposal is in general conformance with the architecture of the community, and includes elements of the community, and as proposed, staff supports the proposal, I'm here for any questions if you have any.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up public comment, one card, Eric.
Chairman Wilson, members of the commission, thank you for moving us in the agenda, it was a long drive getting here this evening, so I very much appreciate that. I have, I am the president of the Cypress Point Homeowners Association, I've been the president for the last seven years, and with me tonight is Michelle Medina and Sylvia Ramirez from First Choice Community Management, and they are the community managers, and they are also residents of the community. So, we had a process within our HOA, this is a significant event financially and to the, to the, to the functioning of the community, and we had a vote of the members of Cypress Point, and it was over eighty percent in favor of having the clubhouse. We have been, started meeting in garages, which doesn't work very well in the winter, and then we moved to CoCo's, and then they shut down, and then we moved to the fire station, and we've kind of not been able to use that facility now. It works great to meet outside in the park during the summertime in the evening, but when it gets dark in the winter and gets cold, it would be a really nice thing to have this, and as the community has been in place now for a number of years, we've got the budget designated to go ahead and do this, and we had the lot, and we appreciate working with staff, and we have read their report and worked with them, and we agree with the conditions and recommendations of the staff report. The one issue that staff pointed out, which we again agree with the staff recommendation, is that when we have these meetings, probably the majority of the people that come walk, and there certainly is not an issue with traffic or parking or anything, because we have the big public park across the street with a lot of street frontage on it, and we, when we put this plan together, we did show a handicap space, but it's a turn-in space, and Public Works would prefer to have that either as a straight-in space, so we come straight into the site, or just to be able to use simple curb parking in front of the lot. We would certainly favor the curb parking in front of the lot, we think it'd be more aesthetic with landscaping in front of the unit, and we certainly have the driveway cut, we can accommodate the ADA access directly in the unit, we think it would look a lot better. So, the staff recommendation for the no onsite parking would be our preference also, and I'm open for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number One? And I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Chairman Wilson, I'll find the project category exempt for SEQA Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, and adopt Resolution Number P-15-040, approving the conditions, use permit portion of case number PLN 15-00023, and adopt Resolution Number P-15-044, approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 15-00023.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
And I'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number Five.
Thank you, item number five is PLN 15-30, it's an appeal. The request is by Cedars Market, the owner, Yalda Youssef, and is located at 14592 Palmdale Road in Suites Nine and Ten. It's currently operating as a convenience store, they have asked for the sale of alcoholic beverage sales. This request does not conform with Title 16 standards in terms of the overconcentration of alcohol licenses in the area, and the ability to permit them based on the size of the store. Therefore, staff recommended denial at the zoning administrator's stage, and also recommends denial tonight before the Planning Commission.
I'll go ahead and open up Agenda Item Number Five, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number Five? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt Resolution P-15038, upholding the zoning administrator's denial of case number ADM 15048, based upon the following reasons, nonconformance with Title 16 standards, overconcentration of alcoholic beverage control licenses within the proposals underlying census tract, and the inability to make the required findings.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Commissioner Do, to deny this appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny this minor conditional use permit. All in favor of the denials?
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been upheld, that decision of the zoning administrator has been upheld by the denial of this appeal. The applicant has 10 days to appeal to the city council, the decision of this commission.
All right, Agenda Item Number Six.
Agenda Item Number Six is DV 15-9, it is a municipal code amendment being proposed by the City of Victorville Development Department. This would modify standards relating to single-family residential side yard setbacks, lot widths, and window placement. The request came out of the focus group meetings that Mr. Huber was just speaking of, the, at the last, at the last probably two focus group meetings, the discussion, we dropped the issue of the lot sizes and going with larger lot sizes, and talked about the ability to get more elbow room between houses, and it was agreed upon that that was something that was desirable to the members of the focus group, and we would move forward with that. There are two options of doing that, there's a flexible way of doing that, that's what is proposed before you tonight. The code amendment that you have before you is a change in the design guidelines, so it's talking about when they're designing their tracts, they're going, a tract developer's going to look for areas where they can bump out, make a larger lot here and there, that'll cover some of the concerns that we had in the focus group, and in the city in general, in terms of having RV parking, having more space for people, more separation between houses, and so therefore, there's the discussion on the second page of the staff report, where a mixture of larger lot widths are encouraged within a subdivision to allow for recreational vehicle access to the side yard, more separation between dwellings and a variety of dwelling product types, and then down in the other, the next underlying part, a variety of larger side yard setbacks are encouraged between single-family dwellings to provide more separation between dwellings and allow space for recreational vehicle parking within the side and rear yard. Those are those two issues, and then also at the focus group meeting, the Building Industry Association proposed the, another privacy issue was to look at the floor plans of houses that are going next to each other, and ensure that the kitchen window isn't looking directly into a bedroom window, and that type of thing, and that's where the third language change would be, window placements shall be evaluated to ensure that the window placements of adjacent homes are done in a manner to maximize privacy and reduce line of sight problems between neighboring homes. Those are the three changes that we're proposing, those are the flexible ones. Again, the focus group was two members of the city council and two members of the Planning Commission, therefore not a majority, therefore we don't know whether that is going to, is going to be what the entire commission or council desires, therefore option B would be, prepare rigid, non-subjective standards for larger lot widths and side yard setbacks, and then the third option is just do nothing, don't approve, recommend approval of this, and it would stay at the current sixty, a lot is 60 feet wide minimum, and it has five foot side yard and a 10 foot side yard, and there has to be a minimum of 15 feet between dwellings. That's our current standards. Those are the proposals before you tonight, if you have any questions.
Questions? All right, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for Agenda Item Number Six, I've got four cards in front of me, first is Carlos Rodriguez.
Chairman Wilson, members of the Planning Commission, Carlos Rodriguez with the Building Industry Association, Valdeview Chapter, want to start off by thanking the city, the Planning Commission, the council, staff, for allowing us to have a seat at the table on the focus group, and the focus group has met twice to discuss this issue in depth, BIA and staff have also discussed the setback issue several times at various technical levels. Option A is the best recommended practice to achieving the overall goal to improve the housing stock in Victorville. During the last focus group meeting, as highlighted, option A was the one favored by a majority of the focus group. BIA authored a letter back in April recommending window elevation evaluations, that would review the placement of windows to ensure privacy in new homes. We all like our neighbors, but we don't like to just, you know, be able to see them right across from us when we're upstairs, so there is indeed a change there, and an important reform that's being introduced. As an industry, we're always concerned with a one-size-fits-all or a rigid approach to policy decisions. Option A represents a balanced approach to addressing the city's vision by encouraging more elbow room, and it also allows a market-driven flexibility necessary for a home builder to bring quality products to the market that are financially viable for home buyers. In closing, option A is not the status quo, and builds upon the successful city and industry collaborations on the recently adopted and significant improvements to the design guidelines. We appreciate your consideration and urge you to support option A, thank you.
All right, my second card is Bo Cooper.
Members of the commission, Bo Cooper with United Engineering Group, wanted to kind of second what Carlos just said, offer support of option A, further allude into some of the details as we discussed in the focus group, you know, the additional language, as proposed by staff, I believe aligns with the design guidelines that were adopted earlier this year. As we discussed in the focus group, my company, United Engineering Group, analyzed several of the existing tentative maps that are currently approved within the city, and actually did find that with the current design guidelines, between 50 and 75 of them, 5% of them are currently, currently would have that flexibility to allow for RV parking on the sides based on the floor plan and the placement of the footprints. Option A will give the flexibility to the builders to move those footprints around, move the footprint locations based on floor plan, based on the size. In addition, the curvilinear street and cul-de-sac guidelines discussed in the recently adopted guidelines will just naturally further lead to wider lots based on design alone. So, with that, I'm here again to voice our support in the additional language in option A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Adam Collier.
Good evening, Chairman Wilson, fellow commissioners, my name is Adam Collier, and I represent the Lewis Group of Companies. We have a couple of projects here in the city of Victorville, we own some land, we've obviously done a lot of retail in the city, and Bo Cooper and I had worked and done a lot of research on all the different track maps and site plans that we worked on over the years, both in Victorville and other communities, up in the high desert, even down in the inland empire, just looking at organically, how do these standards typically work, how do these cities, what type of standards do they use? You know, a 7,200 square foot lot, the five and 10, 15 between, is the standard that is the norm in terms of the way planning is implemented in most of the communities in the inland empire? I think if you look at statistics, I don't think there's maybe one community that uses a different standard. And so, if you look at it from the builder's standpoint, and in my past life, I've also represented up here, that I'm a former city planner myself, and we look at these issues trying to be as consistent as possible with the other practices of other cities, so that way as a builder, when I come in, the product that I'm bringing in is, you know, compatible with the market, I can build it in Hesperia, whatever's successful in Ontario, I could bring from Ontario to the high desert, and I think that flexibility is what's key. And second, I think what we've learned, you know, working with the focus group and working with the Planning Commission is, you know, we're learning, you know, what are some of your concerns, what are your needs? You want the wider lots, you want more flexibility in the setbacks, and I think what we're doing is we're working towards that with these guidelines, and I think this is a good start. And I think it's a good start to see how we can perform, and we come back with new tentative maps, a new product, how we meet those guidelines. So, we look forward to working with you going forward, we support option A, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Nelson Chung?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. This evening, what I like to do is I share some of the statistics, and with the commissioner, if you allow, I'd like to distribute that, if it's okay. The reason why I'm doing that is, we've been discussing this item for a while, and I'd like to share with you, we look at that from more objective, more quantifiable approach, to see how much is enough, and is, or do we have enough? On the first page, what I show was the comparison of three city, and the data was downloaded from July, Core Logic, if you have any interest, you can download yourself, and as we know, we all know, city of Apple Valley has, in majority, they have the biggest lot, and their value is not any better. And if I may direct your attention to the second page, which is even more interesting, and I download the statistics, the data from Red Thing, total 392 datas, and I sort them by lot size, by increment, five to, four to five, five to six, six to seven, seven to eight. And I saw them by lot size, by increment, five to, four to five, five to six, six to seven, seven to eight, so on and so forth, all the way to twenty thousand. The interesting part, even might surprise myself, if you look at that, that graph down below, the value of the home top off at somewhere between seven to eight thousand square foot lot. And since then, the value going downwards, not, not going up. And the more interesting is if you look, uh, uh, the yellow line on the chart and below that is the, that category happened to have exactly same years in term of years built, nineteen ninety-five. With bigger lot, smaller house, the value goes down. You would expect the bigger lot is more enough to compensate the value. It didn't. And even more interesting is normally this, when this whole size of the home goes down, the value per square foot goes up. It didn't. It also goes down. So what's, what does it tell us is not us as a home builder, or I'm, I'm a home builder and architect. And it's not us, it's the local resident, local people, they determine what are they looking for. And then, uh, if I may direct your attention to the next page, I just used that example. It's a, it's a one of the home in a track to be open next week in Riverside. Then, uh, uh, what I was trying to share, what I'm trying to share with you is the new trend of design. Basically, because the baby boomer, like myself, uh, what people looking for is master town and informal living. You have, you have a grand room, dining, kitchen, back to the backyard. With that, you need as much width in the house as possible. For instance, like this house is fifty feet in width. And if you flip to the next page, it, it tell you, I mean, I apologize, I took the picture, it's not professional, so it's not, not that great looking. But it tells the story, you need a width in the house to make it work. And believe me, you know, we are, we are, we and the city, we are in the same boat. We have to compete against product in other city, in other, no, regulated by other re- agencies. So we have to live, we have to go out to fight within the means you give to us. If we tie our, tie one hand behind us, go out to fight against others, we're gonna lose and the only thing we can do is by reducing the price, which nobody wants to do that. We don't want to see that. So with that, I, I appreciate your time and I urge you to support option one, uh, proposed by B- BIA. Thank you. And I'm here to answer any question you have.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I have one question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The petition I had mentioned something about baby boomers, that would be my generation. Do you have any updates regarding millennials? Just an interest.
Well, that's interesting though, that, they, a lot of people talking about they, they don't buy a house, they want to rent. I, I read a lot of statistics actually stating that's not true. They are burdened by debts. Number one, they have a lot of student loan and, uh, and, uh, they, uh, they may have a well-paid jobs. Uh, that's another one. So because during this recession and the, actually, I'm, I happen to be a director on the bank. So I, recently I got a, I attend a seminar host by FDIC. What surprised me is, uh, they have a study segment, three segment of income. The lowest income, which means, uh, weekly income less than six hundred thirty-eight dollars. That category lost fifty percent of the job, but again, eighty some percent. The middle portion from six thirty-eight to twelve something, they lost fifty-one some percent. Only gained one percent, one point two or something. We, the, the middle section was decimated. So that's why.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your back?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number six? Being none, I will go ahead and bring it back to the commission.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have one comment. I think that option A would, um, prevent our neighborhoods from looking like they're all the same design. And that was one of the things that we, we looked at. And, and when you have the difference in the, if you have the, have the flexibility of the difference of, I, I'd like to see you have the flexibility to, to look at that in a, a new subdivision. And there's a lot of people like me that have a motorhome, they want it right on their side yard because they don't want it where somebody can, um, break into it or anything. So I, I think it's a good option.
Well, I have a comment. I just, I wanted to thank staff. I wanted to thank the industry partners, um, and then Rob and myself and, uh, city council members that were on the workshop, um, because I, I enjoyed the candid discussion that we had. You guys provided a lot of information that allowed us, I, I think it opened our eyes a little bit to allow us to see some things that, from your perspective. But then you guys were also willing to listen to both staff's interests and what they're trying to achieve and also getting our input and, which allowed us to basically get to where we're at right now. So I wanted to thank you for your guys' help also. With that, um, is there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to state that there's great value in focus groups, um, especially when it's spread out regarding different individuals like the industry, government, as well as, uh, uh, disinterested parties or single individuals. It's great to be well-rounded. Uh, second of all, I take the recommendation from the focus group, I take it to heart. Meaning that I am, um, I do not, I'm not in favor of wasting people's time or their effort. So I, uh, will lean towards the recommendation of the focus group. That's the purpose of the focus group is to get, give us guidance and feedback and I, I commend them in doing so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your back?
Well, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and make the recommendation that the city council find the code amendment exemption pursuant to section one five zero six one, subsection B, subsection three of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and adopt resolution number P dash fifteen dash zero four three, the attached A, recommending city council approved case, uh, number DEV fifteen dash zero 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 nine, which provides flexibility, flexible guidelines encouraging a variety of larger lot widths and side yard setbacks.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Chair Wilson, a second by Vice Chair Kirth. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been recommended, uh, for city council approval, um, within the advertising period. I would suspect, uh, an October, October city council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, in compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the planning commission? Go ahead and close public comments and move on to agenda item number seven.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, agenda item number seven is a request for the approval of an underground utility suspension agreement for minor site plan, uh, case number ADM fifteen dash zero 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 two three. This minor site plan was previously approved by the zoning administrator. It was, uh, approved in order to make way uh, for the relocation of an O'Reilly Auto Parts store. It include, uh, uh, improvements to an existing building, exterior improvements and improvements to the existing parking lot. That's why it was done as administrative approval. Um, one of the conditions on that approval, uh, because the improvements to the site were over twenty thousand dollars, one of the conditions of approval of the minor site plan were to, uh, gain approval of an underground utility suspension agreement. The site currently has power lines running across the back of the site, uh, but abutting, uh, properties are developed and have overhead utility lines as well. So in accordance with, uh, guidance provided by planning commission policy, uh, zero nine dash zero zero one, uh, staff require the, uh, approval of a suspension agreement. So that's what this proposal is in front of you for. Um, and staff recommends the approval of the execution of a suspension agreement for the subject site.
I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number seven. Is there anyone wishing to speak to agenda item number seven? None, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, I have one comment to staff. I, I do think twenty thousand dollars in improvements is outdated. And I would like us to have recommendations back that, I, and I don't know whether it should be fifty thousand because I don't see the plans and things, but, but I know that that was in effect twenty years ago at least. Okay?
Are you recommending, are you, would you like staff to come with a recommendation of a?
Of how much it should be instead of, uh, instead, twenty thousand is just nothing. You.
We can work with Brian and Engineering and go over what some of the new figures are for different improvements, paving parking lots, putting in sidewalks, things like that, and come up with a more reasonable value, value to those things and see what, see where the commission would like to go.
And, uh, did you want me to make a motion? I would move to approve the execution of a suspension agreement for the undergrounding of overhead utility lines based upon the review process outlined in planning commission policy, uh, C- PCP zero nine zero zero one. And due to the fact the project includes over twenty thousand improvements while adjacent developments is improved, but lacks underground utility lines.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a motion by Commissioner Huber. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those utilities and the suspension agreement for the underground utilities has been approved.
And agenda item number eight.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight is a request from San Bernardino County. It results from a letter I received from the real estate department of the San Bernardino County uh, regarding purchasing a property that's currently behind, uh, Viarda Market on Cottonwood Avenue. I responded back that the property is not zoned for what they were proposing to do it. Uh, they're proposing to, uh, do their fleet management, uh, repair, do minor repairs, oil changes, tire changes, things like that to the county, uh, San Bernardino County vehicles at this location. That is similar to auto repair or service, auto service. And, um, so I responded back. I also spoke to the author of that letter, Brandon Ocasio, and recommended other sites that staff might be able to get a little bit behind, more supportive, which aren't, you know, maybe right behind Home Depot, right next to the Victor Elementary School District Bus Facility, not right on Cottonwood Avenue, you know, maybe a little bit more that we could work with in terms of, of allowing it to go in. Cottonwood Avenue just seems like it, it's more of a thoroughfare, that it's a be- little bit better commercial location, has more options. Did get the, where Azusa Pacific University is at in that office building. That office building was built probably six, seven, eight years ago. The area could develop like that in the future. So, um, I guess I, Graham Carr is the realtor speak, uh, standing before you. Uh, the only option I could propose for him was to possibly come before the commission and explain, uh, his rationale on why we should allow it there and see if the commission would even entertain it. There's no application before you tonight. It's just a, you either agree that, yeah, it might be able to work, we might be able to make it work, or no. Um, don't make it work and I'll have to go back and look for another property. Again, as I pointed out in my letter, it's, it's not that I don't appreciate they're looking at that area. It, it is a difficult area. But the, I guess the thing for the commission to keep in mind is when you build a building, it's gonna be there for the next fifty to eighty years. And is this the best use for the commercial? Maybe it's not a good area for commercial. Maybe it could, we should change the zoning on it. But it's not that, and it's not. It looks like it does have the potential to have commercial buildings in the future to, to staff. I did bring it to our staff meeting and, and with the other planners and the consent. Commercial and unless they can find a better location, right location. But with that, I'll turn it over to Graham and.
I'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening and thank you, Chris. I appreciate your time and I appreciate the commission's time. I'll treat, try and keep it as, uh, as brief as possible. I put together a little presentation for you guys. Uh, the first page pretty much outlines uh, what I'd like to present to the commission. I, I do want to make it clear that I do not represent the county of San Bernardino. I am here on behalf of the owner of the property. Uh, Mr. Lance Taylor and his family, and they've owned the property for years and years. And Mr. Taylor has done, uh, many developments in the city of Victorville. Um, but in, in brief, uh, the county wants to build about a nine thousand square foot fleet maintenance facility. Uh, they're very willing and understand that, uh, ultimately the city of Victorville, um, has all, all the design guidelines. They, they expressed to me that the architectural engineering and fleet management department is certainly willing uh, to work with the, uh, planning and staff, uh, as to exterior design and any other issues that might come up with a property. Uh, we've worked on this project, not specifically on this property, but on trying to find them a property for better than twelve months now. Um, I also do want to, excuse me, um, express to you that we do have a purchase agreement signed by both the seller and the county of San Bernardino. It does come up for approval at the next county meeting, which is, uh, next Wednesday or next Tuesday, September fifteenth. I understand we can't get approval here tonight. We're not looking for that. But we do, we are kind of looking for direction because I don't want to waste the county of San Bernardino's time or, or anyone else's time. If this is not a project that the city would consider, uh, then I need to let everyone know so we can take it off the agenda for the county and, and start pursuing other properties. Uh, but again, it's a nine thousand square foot building, more or less would probably have about nine service bays. The vehicles primarily are gonna be vi- uh, cars, sedans and, and light pickup trucks with a few, about eighty percent of those, of the vehicles will be cars and light trucks. Uh, there will be a limited amount of large trucks and/or equipment that would be serviced there. The area that these vehicles will come from basically is within a three mile radius of this facility. And that's why they identified this facility, uh, as, as one that would work for them. Regarding the existing conditions of the property, uh, it is, as Chris pointed out, it's a commercially zoned, C-two zoned, um, property. And, um, in its most strictest interpretation of C-two zoning, it probably doesn't fit into that. But I also attached a couple of sheets in the package that I think, um, in the broadest interpretation of the zoning, you will see that this project probably would fit into, um, what that zoning allows. Um, there's a, um, excuse me, got a little dry mouth here. Uh, those two sheets show that, um, that under a public safety facility, which again, this would be a broad interpretation of that zoning, uh, it would be allowed. And also gas and service stations are allowed under a C-two zoning. And this essentially is a gas and a service station. Um, the property is flat. Um, it is, it is, the, the, uh, land actually is on the east side of Cottonwood, about three hundred and fifty feet north of Monarch. I've had that property listed now for probably four years for sale. Uh, this is really the first attention that this property has drawn. Um, I don't believe this area in its present zoning, um, i- is really the highest and best juice of the property. It may have been when the zoning was put together, but since the opening of the Nisqually interchange, I think the traffic patterns, I don't have any information or specifically to go on to present to you, but just from my experience of driving Nisqually and Balsam. to present to you, but just from my experience of driving Nisqually and Balsam every day, the traffic patterns have changed significantly since Nisqually, the interchange has been opened. Obviously, in the past, Cottonwood was a corridor for people to go north from Bear Valley Road to other parts of Victorville. I would suggest now that Balsam has taken over as one of the corridors for going north-south from and to Bear Valley Road, also Nisqually Road itself has taken on a lot more traffic. As we probably all know, that C two zoning is retail oriented, retail oriented businesses want to be where the traffic flow is. No traffic flow, retail businesses are not going to go to that zoning. The, another factor is, we have the bus barn, V V, or V E S D, Victor Elementary School District has a bus barn on ten acres, two properties to the northeast of this property. I'm sure that bus barn is a very similar use as to what the county is proposing here. So I would say that...
I should point out that that property, the zoning on that property was changed to public civic to allow for that. It wasn't put into the C two, to let you know.
Oh, the zoning has been changed on it?
On the bus barn, which was an option I put, I threw out to the commission for this one as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. The current zoning map shows it still to be C two, and that's why I'm bringing that up. So, in conclusion, again, I am here just to get some direction from the Planning Commission. I appreciate your time listening to me. I think that, I mean, immediately, immediately, the reason I got involved in the first place, the county came to me on a different property in Asperia. We looked at that, the determination was made that that wasn't the best property for them, so I presented some other properties that I had listed. This one on Cottonwood was one of them. They looked at that, talked to the various departments involved, I guess they determined this was the best piece that they had going for them at the time, decided to pursue some kind of an agreement. I guess all of us were under the opinion that the zoning, and they had told me that the zoning would work for what they were attempting to do, because I didn't really understand the full parameters of what they wanted to accomplish here. After we negotiated agreements, got everything signed, all of a sudden they realized, hey, you know, we might have a zoning issue here. But after initially talking to them and initially talking about another property, and that wasn't going to work, it immediately came to mind that Cotton, this property on Cottonwood was good size for them, and it really seemed to fit the bill for what they wanted to do. I did not see that area around Cottonwood really being a C two retail oriented zoning. So, we pursued it, and again, I think it would be a very good use for that property. I don't think it's out of character with what's going on in the area. You mentioned the college property there, again, is, Chris, has that been rezoned as well?
College?
That property there on the two...
No, that, that is allowed in, it was built as an office building, and then I think we, I'm not sure how they...
And then right directly behind our property to the east is a property that's owned C A, which is kind of a box in there amongst all the C two. If you look at this map...
Graham, I think it's actually zone C two T.
Okay.
I saw yours had C A on it, and I looked, and I think it's...
Okay, well, that may be, but the current zoning map that I have, and it's on your website, shows that to be C A.
I'll have to look into that.
So, and this is just a question I have, is the T zoning still in existence?
It is, but it doesn't mean a lot.
Okay.
Very few parcels on it. It was, it was done a long time ago for Desert Tortoise Review, for site plan, sometimes it just says site plan review required. We require that of everything now, environmental is required of everything. There are several parcels, I think, more towards Ridgecrest Road where it's for slope protection, or it does actually mean something, it had more of a meaning, but throughout most of the city, it's...
Could I ask a question? Is Cottonwood, how is Cottonwood designated on our circulation element? Is it a major arterial, or, do you know?
I'm going off my memory here, so...
Okay.
I believe it's a local road. I don't recall if it's a collector, it's certainly not an arterial.
Don't...
Yeah, because it's not, it's not a four lane, is it? It's two lane in some portions of it.
Right.
Well, according to what's written here, you've got Locust is planned as a collector roadway versus Cottonwood, which is an arterial, meaning it is expected to carry more traffic.
Okay, well, my memories did not serve me correctly.
But I would also say probably with the Nisqually Interchange going in, that may change traffic flows, well, I'm pretty sure it's...
The traffic flows have reduced on Bear Valley since Nisqually Interchange, maybe fifteen percent, but eventually, of course, that will grow back again as this whole Victor Valley develops, but I don't know what the pattern on Cottonwood is now versus before, if the levels have changed.
Back way to Viartas.
We didn't, I don't think we took any counts on Cottonwood.
Here the, it says here this, zone change to C one neighborhood commercial, this would open up the entire area to similar requests by other property owners. Have we had other property owners coming in requesting that?
No, no, that was just a staff comment saying that if we changed this property to C one, which would allow him to apply for conditional use permit for automotive repair, to me that means that more people would then come in and look for similar...
What's allowed in neighborhood commercial?
We changed, a lot of it in the general plan update, we added, we moved automotive repair strictly there, took it out of C two and moved it to C one. We moved assembly uses such as churches and other meeting type of events, that type of thing, we moved those to C one, a neighborhood service, commercial, and also... Assembly, yeah, it still allows retail, it still allows a lot of the things that C two does, but it, we also put some of those service uses into, out of C two, to get the C two to be more of a sales tax and generate.
Any other questions? More comments?
I think I about covered it. Without a bottle of water, I can't talk anymore, so...
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Being none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and...
Not giving him very much direction.
No, and I tell you...
Bring it back to us to try to give some direction to staff.
I've read everything that he's presented to us, and thank you for some of these drawings, a little bit more information on what they're trying to plan on doing, and, you know, I really, I honestly have mixed feelings on it. We already have a, what looks like a fleet maintenance type facility right in the middle of this commercial. Put another one there, is it going to make a big deal, really? I do see that that area is some of the larger chunks of commercial that we have left for central Victorville. I don't really see a lot of that stuff becoming shopping centers, major retail. I do see, you know, in my feelings, my experience, I do see some, you know, lighter type retail stuff, more office oriented or business park oriented type stuff. I wish this site wasn't right on Cottonwood, because Cottonwood will be the first one to go commercial if it is going to happen in this cycle, and if it does go commercial. I wish there was stuff a little bit more internal to some of those large nodes that could be found as five acres, but I know you've been working on this one, you've got a client, I know how that works. On the other hand, that the, it sits right now, and for probably quite a while, it is kind of an ugly property, I mean, it sits right behind the backside of all those older retail buildings. I wouldn't want to, but my nice retail building facing area, that just doesn't look so good. That's why I have torn feelings on this right now, and I can't, I'd like to hear what else the commission...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
My, I gather from the, from the staff, that the property will be better suited for a different type use other than what's before us as relates to San Bernardino County services. And with that said, if we look projectively into the future for holding out for commercial use, then I'm in favor of holding out for commercial use versus something that the staff has indicated is not suitable at this particular timeframe. So, that's my position. I concur with the director.
Don't we have other areas that are designated PC? Seems to me that we've got public and civic. Don't we, we have other areas, don't we?
Yes, but there's not, there's not vacant areas, we don't zone PC, we almost do it on a site specific basis.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, you don't, unless a school has told us that they're interested in putting a school in an area, then we would, you could put PC over an area or something, but typically it's not a zone that we would just project and put on property without a specific project. Like Raj, like Rob said, I had the same, you know, catty corner from there, the next parcel back, the, behind the mini storage units, behind Home Depot, next to the elementary school bus barn, those are all properties that I could see would have trouble even as an office building, and definitely as commercial. But yeah, I kind of agree with Rob, if something goes on Cottonwood, it's probably going to be there. I mean, yeah, the back of Viarda Market isn't great, but it's not, it's not awful enough that, you know, it would kill a project probably. It just, there's just so many other properties in that area that...
And to me, it also depends on, you know, taking away the fact that, okay, that's one more piece of, a parcel that's not going to offer retail sales tax and all that, and there's plenty along, I'm not as worried about that at this time, but it is, you know, a fleet, a fleet maintenance yard plopped right there, will that look appropriate in a number of days? And that's another thing too, that I said in the workshop, was, what's it look like? If it's going to be a non-retail sales tax thing, is it going to, is it going to at least enhance that for now, that there's new development there, and it looks real modern and clean, even though it should be in an industrial area, probably like out in Asperia where they have the bus yards of transportation, it's a Taj Mahal, but it's in the industrial area out there. But I kind of would like to see what it would look like architecturally wise. It's going to look like a fleet yard, eh, or is it going to look, well, at least Victorville has new development, doesn't, it looks kind of nice in the neighborhood.
If I could address that, from what the county, and again, there, I'm not representing the county, you've probably talked to them more than I have, but what, I did get an email from Brandon today, and he said, you know what, the various departments are all in on this, they are willing to work with the city to make it look pretty much, I mean, within reason obviously, but to make it look like something that the city and all the residents would be, you know, appreciative of. So, I think from that standpoint, they're willing to work with staff and so forth in creating something that's very nice looking aesthetically. And again, you mentioned that right across the street, that center there, in regard to make, or to the retail application of this particular property, that center, if it was oriented differently, but right now, it's kind of, gives you the impression that Cottonwood through that section is almost like an alleyway, because you got the back of all those buildings, you don't have the fronts of them, so it's not conducive to someone wanting to develop on the east side of Cottonwood, because you got that kind of ugly balls there, and not an open retail area, so. Again, the county has expressed to me that they, they make it aesthetically appealing as working with the city and make it look nice.
They did express the same thing to me, I guess, to Graham's comment. My thing would be, turn its back to the back of Viarda, because we don't want to see the open garage door bays facing Cottonwood, and then you're talking, we're making it doubly worse, you know, we're going to face its back towards its back, and then you're really talking about a, you know, just a canal in there, but that's what I was thinking, I, he expressed, yeah, putting a wall around it, doing architectural, some architectural details, I mean, within limit, and they're not. And he, he did also want to say that they weren't, they're not here to fight the city, that if you decide no, they'll go, they'll look elsewhere. They do really like this site, they do want to try and make it work, but if it doesn't, then...
Certainly.
Once again, I'd like to see what it looks like, just because, you know, you got self-storage units there, those are older, they look pretty bad, and that's right on Bear Valley Road there, and then, you know, I've seen other self-storage units, and I don't know what kind of benefit they give to the city, but some of the modern ones that were built, you know, five, six years ago, actually look, can look pretty nice, you know, kind of like car washes that are going up now, car wash, but they look kind of, and I said, that to me is kind of important, but I know you need to, you need to have a gut feeling by...
Yeah, and that's what I'm here to find out, is if the, if the Planning Commission and staff would consider this project in its broadest sense, then I will go to the county and say, hey, Dave, you've expressed to me that you would consider it, obviously they have to submit plans, it all have to go through the regular process, but at least I have something to tell them, they can vote on it conditionally, and we can move forward, because we can't do anything until the board of supervisors either says yea or nay to it. Once they say yea or nay, the planning process, the entitlement process starts happening. And, you know, if you guys think it'd be something you would consider, we can move on. If not, then like Chris was saying, they'll move on to a different site. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess with that being said, what would the considerations be?
Well, I guess I'll go first. Yeah, well, based upon what I saw, and based upon what your presentation was, thank you, and also considering staff, I personally would like to see... That's my thoughts.
And it would have to be public civic, and then the, what would you do with the other properties around it, you know? You'd have to, we're trying to be consistent here. I have a little bit of a problem with it.
However, if that did go public civic, and what do you do around it? Well, that's the same question, if you had a very beautiful little retail strip center right there, what are you going to do around it? Do you get the back of it, you know?
Yeah.
Because it's only five acres, I mean, it would have to be left vacant to be able to get a nice twenty. I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm interested in what you're saying, because you look at it a different way.
In that case, I don't really think it would hurt it or help it. And I know I kind of danced back and forth with my comments, and I never really said which way I'm going, but if, if, I'd be okay if the, if you relayed to, personally, just me. We'll look at it, but be very aware and warned that there's a lot more to look at, you know, I had to relay the message through staff or through you. Yes, I think the city might be on board, and they spend a whole bunch of money and a whole bunch of time and a whole bunch of resources, and it comes before this body or any other body, and they say, oh heck no, we don't like it, you know, that would be wrong, so, bear if we do.
Rob, I think we do need to kind of a, yes, you support it going forward, or no, you don't.
I would, I would, I would support it enough to go forward and say, I think this can happen, but it depends on how it's going to look.
Okay, that's understood. I guess, I guess what I'm cautioning is...
And saying beware, because it could...
And, and that's, that's fine.
Might could totally change it.
I would just caution a little bit that the state law requires them to notify the city when they're buying the property. We've done that, we've told them it doesn't fit. If we turn around and say, we're ready to give it a shot, then they'd have a case if they come back and try and work with us and try and do some, you know, we're trying to make it look good, trying to do some stuff, and then we say, you haven't done enough, or something, you know, then I think they have a case that says, look, we're the county, we really... Then I think they have a case that says, look, we're the county. We really don't need to, you know, you told us it was okay. Now it's, you know, so I just, yeah, we, they'll probably work with us to a point, but they don't want to spend, they're not going to make a Taj Mahal out of it, probably.
That's true.
That would be my, my gut feeling. So just, yes, we make it, we think it can work, and we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about aesthetics. We'll talk about walls. We'll talk about things.
But I mean, every project I've ever seen come through the cities since I've been down here has gotten better and better, and your staff has asked for more treatments, even on self-storages and industrial boxes. They are, you know, they have some more treatments, and they have some metal facades and all these things.
Sure.
You drive by it just and then go, why did Victorville do that right there? You know, that's my biggest-
Two votes yes.
I'm undecided. I, at this time, no.
No.
Well, as I had reiterated, and Chris just said that it doesn't fit. So, at this particular timeframe regarding what their goal is and what we have available, just doesn't work at this particular timeframe. Maybe somewhere down the road or something else that could. Thank you.
That would be three votes no and two votes yes. Sorry, Graham.
I understand. It's a political system. That's how democracy works. One, one question while I have you all here. If it was not on Cottonwood Avenue, would you commissioners have a different opinion about this project?
I would. I would because I don't like to just pigeonhole, and Chris knows this. I don't like to just pigeonhole. It's a certain colored zoning. Line folders go the other way. And I think staff has the flexibility too, to say, and we heard that tonight, even in this, even in this C2 zoning, get the zoning for a minute. Does the project fit where it's going to sit and looking at the future? And now, if it's not quite the right zoning, is there a way to massage that or make it right and make it legal? So my answer would be-
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I got something out of you guys, so I appreciate that. Well, thank you very much, and I do appreciate the-
Thank you.
The issues you guys have to deal with, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Presentation reports by commission members. Commissioner Do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I commend my colleagues for our effort in, in improving the lives of our community in any way we can. Since my, this is my birthday month, the month of September, so I looked up a number of things that are occurring in the month of September, and one of them is the city of Victorville. On September 21st, ninth of this year, Victorville was turned as an incorporated city, 53 years old. It was incorporated September 21st in 1962. And with that said, AARP has been getting my attention ever since I turned 50, and even more so now. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We sure hear that?
No comments.
Commission reporter?
Ken.
Commission Kurt?
I just want to, had one clarification. When we went through on agenda item number three, I didn't bring it up at the time because I was looking for it, but for some reason, on the, on the resolution number, and this is for the massage, right? Yeah. The last resolution was 15 dash 038.
It got changed.
It got changed to 34, but I was looking, I haven't, I couldn't, was the resolution not here? Because I was looking for 34. Oh, it's in this attach, like, because I couldn't-
It's just the number they changed. Red to make it to the correct resolution.
Yeah, I just never saw the resolution. I still don't see it. Maybe it just wasn't-
Thunder, there's 038.
Yeah, there's 034 resolution, but if you wanted to look at the resolution, where would you find it?
It's behind the staff report.
Page 51.
I ripped it off. Sorry, you guys. Just trying to learn. It's 38.
It was 38.
Wasting my time.
Okay, so in this case, it was, I, so I didn't need to look for a 30, a 34 when we made the motion to reference resolution 34.
She's just like, she's going to use her word out and-
I've already changed the original.
Not a big deal. I was just curious because I was looking for it during the meeting. I was like, I think I'm going crazy.
I'd like to thank Eagle Eye Kurt for-
Yeah, that was a big help. Yeah, yeah. You're welcome.
All right. Anything else?
No.
And I don't have anything. So, I will close this to our next regular meeting on October 14th, 2015.
Yeah, good job. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff on this meeting, huh?
Fell for the storm grains. Didn't go by there this morning at 8 o'clock. Put that whole jack around the corner. Off and on, and then I was outside and-